It is 7:01. We will reconvene in open session, this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. I want to begin by welcoming everybody who's here tonight and welcoming our folks who are watching at home. We truly appreciate your support of the Waco Public Schools and your interest in Waco ISD, and we're glad you're here this evening. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device on you, we would ask at this time that you either turn it off or at the very least put it on silent. We would also like to remind you that the board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals, as management is the sole responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. And once again, thank you for coming out tonight. We're glad you're here. And at this time, we'd ask that you join the board in a moment of silence as we pause for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. We'll move on to, back up to item four, I guess, which is our public hearing. Are we going to do that before the Pledge of Allegiance? Or are we going to do the pledge first?
Good choice.
We'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll move back up. And we'll just do the pledge after we do the special recognition, or the hearing after the special recognition. Will that work? All right. Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. King.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two outstanding students from the Atlas Academy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please welcome 7th grader Bridget Eichenberg and 8th grader Paige Dupuy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Board members, please join me and further dearest for tonight's special recognition. We begin this special recognition portion of our meeting by saying thank you to our Pledge of Allegiance leaders from Atlas Academy, both of whom are no stranger to school board meetings. In fact, these two young ladies were here for our June business meeting where they were recognized for their third-place finish at National History Day. Bridget Eichenberg is entering her 7th grade year at Atlas, and besides competing in History Fair, Bridget enjoys science and cheerleading. She is also an avid softball player. Bridget is the daughter of Gretchen and Alex Eichenberg. Paige Dupuy is entering her 8th grade year at Atlas, and one of her goals is to qualify for National History Day for the third year in a row. Besides an academic high achiever, Paige is also an accomplished violinist. She also enjoys dance and cheerleading. Paige is the daughter of Mandy and Carrie Dupuy. Thank you again, Bridget and Paige, for leading the Pledge of Allegiance, and best wishes for another great school year.[220.62][220.62](APPLAUSE). Here's a riddle. Who smiles in the morning, smiles in the evening, and eats plenty of Rolades in between? The answer is a school bus driver. On a more serious note, bus drivers are truly the unsung heroes of public education. For thousands of Waco ISD students, the bus driver is the first person to greet them with a pleasant "good morning" and the last to cheerfully tell them "see you tomorrow." A bus driver has the power to set the tone for a student to have a great day at school. And even more importantly, a bus driver is charged with safely transporting 30 to 60 children to and from school each day, no matter what weather conditions may exist. Tonight, it is with great pleasure that Waco ISD and Student Transportation Specialists present the first WISD Bus Driver of the Year Award. Tonight's honoree is Mr. Robert Lee Taylor, a lifelong Waco resident. Diagnosed with bone cancer in 2002, Mr. Taylor underwent intense chemotherapy treatments. Doctors ultimately decided that it was best to amputate his arm. After his recovery, Mr. Taylor longed to rejoin the workforce, but his missing arm proved to be a hindrance. However, in 2006, his luck changed when Student Transportation Specialist offered him a job as a bus driver. The ever-thankful Mr. Taylor says, "Working for STS is like having another family. The wonderful staff has accepted me even though I am a little different, and inspired me to be a better bus driver and a better person. Plus, I love the kids." STS would like to thank the Waco ISD School Board for the opportunity to recognize Robert Lee Taylor, our 2014 Bus Driver of the Year.[336.19][336.19](APPLAUSE). Thank you, sir. Pleasure having you.[367.02][367.02](APPLAUSE). A police officer's badge is a symbol of public trust. Therefore, it is most appropriate that new members of the Waco ISD Police Department take the oath of office in a public setting. Tonight, I'm pleased to be joined by Police Chief Ken Bowman to recognize and formally install the newest members of the Waco ISD Police Force. Gabriel Aguilar is a 1993 graduate of Waco High School. After serving as a firefighter for the past 11 years, Gabriel is making a career move to law enforcement. His dream of being a police officer was fulfilled in June when he graduated from the McLennan Community College Law Enforcement Academy and was hired to serve in the school district from which he graduated. Gabriel and his wife Maria have three children, including two who are now attending the Atlas Academy. Jerry Vaughn is a 2001 graduate of University High School. You're doing good.[432.16][432.16](LAUGHTER). It was while attending middle school that Jerry became interested in being an officer, thanks to the friendships he made with WISD police officers. Jerry worked as a youth counselor and juvenile detention officer prior to graduating from the McLennan County College Law Enforcement Academy two months ago. Jerry and his fiancee, Lamandria Fields, have four children, all of whom have supported his quest to become a police officer. And now, Mr. Aguilar and Mr. Vaughn, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, instead your name.
I, David Vaughn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of police officer.
The duties of the office of police officer.
With the Waco Independent School District.
With the Waco Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chief Bowman will now attach your badge to wear with honor. Chief, our lieutenant. Officers, if you'd like to meet your new board. Thank you, welcome. It's my honor.[557.25][557.25](APPLAUSE). Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard. A pleasure to have you. Would you like to meet your board? Meet your chief?[568.66][568.66](LAUGHTER). Oh, yes, chief. Chief, do we have family here that you could help us introduce?
The officers.
Oh, the officers?
Come on, come introduce your family to us here.
Yes, please. Yeah, right here.
Yes, ma'am. I have my sister Sierra Vaughn here, her fiancee junior, and my fiancee, Lamandra Fields, my kids, Jaden, Rihanna.[609.88][609.88](LAUGHTER). My five-month-old daughter, Odyssey, and my dad, Jerry Vaughn Sr., and my stepmother, Annie Roberts Vaughn, and my sister, Shakela Vaughn, and my sister, other sister Jerika Vaughn, and my mother also is here, Sherilyn Rice.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
I have my wife Maria Aguilar, my oldest daughter, which my only daughter, Hope Aguilar, Michael Aguilar, my oldest son, Charlie Aguilar, actually Christian Aguilar, who's in my dad's seat there, that's my father, my mom is in the yellow behind him, my nieces next to her, Gina, and it's my brother Abel and his wife Mona.
Thank you. And welcome aboard. Thank you. Good job.
Dale, would you announce that? Well, you said it was a good observation.
Ask him to stand up. We recognize you now.
Officer Aguilar's son, Michael, stand up, please.
Y'all recognize him?
He was one of the stars in the Waco ISD promotional video.[682.51][682.51](APPLAUSE). Thank you for being here, and thanks for sharing your dad with us.
And we're going to be able to say, "We knew you when," okay? When we see you on the big screen, we're going to say, "We knew him." You need to stand up.
Congratulations to our officers and the families who joined them this evening and look forward to your service to the children of Waco ISD. We will move on now to item nine, Audience for Guests. Because it's my understanding, nobody has signed up, correct? All right. Then we will move back up to item four, which is our public hearing to discuss the 2014-15 budget and proposed tax rate. So I guess we will recess the meeting and convene the public hearing. Ms. Davis.
As required by our Texas Education Code, we are having tonight, under Code Section 44.002, superintendent has prepared or caused to be prepared.
Not caused.
A budget covering all the proposed expenditures of the district for the following fiscal year. And our official budget does include the general fund, the food service fund, and the debt service fund. And there will be, as of tomorrow, there is a summary of, well, there is currently a summary of the proposed budget compared to the prior year on our website, and as of tomorrow, we will post whatever is adopted tonight. The Texas property tax law also requires us to have, under our truth in taxation law requires us to comply with certain steps in adopting our tax rate. There's four principles of truth in taxation. I know this week, after talking to our local reporter, sometimes our transparency in truth in taxation is a little more confusing than it is transparent, but we'll get into a little bit of that later on. But property values have the right to know what the increases in their property's appraised value is and be notified of the resulting estimated taxes. The district must publish the proposed tax rate and the rollback tax rate and other specified information. We did that on August 15th. We had our notice in the newspaper, and we discussed that at our meeting on the 14th. We established tonight as the public hearing date. We need to publish the budget and proposed tax rate hearing notice. Again, that was done on the 15th. And then we must hold the election to ratify a tax rate if we adopt it above the tax rate, the rollback rate. We are not recommending that, and that is not what has been published. Our budget timelines, we started back in February, talking about where we ended up last year. In April, we also discussed enrollment projections, our early revenue estimates, and our starting salary. We continued updates through July. July 25th, we received a certified values from our chief appraiser. From there, we do establish what our tax rate will be. That, as I said, was presented to the board at a meeting on the 14th, where they set the date for this meeting tonight, and then we published on the 15th. And then tonight, we're holding the public meeting. Then we will adopt the tax rate and set, adopt the budget and then set a tax rate. The budget must be adopted before we set the tax rate. Looking at our budget priorities for the year, compensation is always a high priority for the district. We did, well, we started our, increased our starting teacher pay early in the year, and then were able to give about a 2.4% average increase to our teachers. We also increased the minimum wage rate for auxiliary people, auxiliary workers. We offered a cost of living increase about 2.1% across the board. We have provided incentives for student performance to teachers and other staff, and we've provided competitive stipends and an increase of district's contribution to health insurance. Some of our other priorities, of course, is providing a strong instructional support. One of the issues that we felt in the district was discipline, so we added about 32 positions of behavioral aides in the budget. Then there was also increased funding for dyslexia and advanced academic programs. There was strengthening of the technology support, and then the support in parental involvement. We also, back in 2011-12, we've talked about, we cut a lot of our equipment replacement and vehicle replacement, and part of our goal was sound asset management, so we did replace a lot of that funding this year, and then we supplemented our major improvements funding. The other thing that we always try to do is to balance our budget. This year, we were able to balance our revenues and expenditures and include those upgrades as we talked about. We do have some unfunded projects that we'll talk about in a minute. This is a summary of the official budget. You see the funds I talked about, our general fund, our child nutrition fund, and our debt service fund. The total of those three budgets is $144 million. As I said, you see our estimated revenues cover the appropriations. We had beginning fund balances totaling $39 million, and so our ending fund balances with that balanced budget would be that $39.2 million. We included, as I said, a cost, an across-the-board salary increase, 2.1% for all employee groups, and a 2.4% increase on the teacher schedule. This is an average increase on the teacher's schedule, ranging between, the lowest was $1,000, and then some, of course, received a higher increase. That cost the district about $1.1 million. And this is total. This is not just those funds in the addition, in the official budget. That includes staff that is funded through grants and other resources. We have, as I said, we have included in the base budget $750,000 for major repairs and renovations. We have a list that has been put together by various departments throughout the district. Most of the projects are coming from our maintenance and facilities area, although some of the big dollars were a few requests from athletics and fine arts. Those additional requests total $9.4 million. We will be prioritizing that list, and as we see where we end up this fiscal year as far as fund balance, we will be bringing those projects back to the board in September or early October, or October, to make some decisions on taking some of our fund balance to fund these projects. We have, as I said before, we have some required postings on the internet that we have to comply with under the law, and one of those is comparing our actual budget from last year with a proposed budget for this coming year. Now, it is a little different comparison because it is actual ending budget with amendments and roll-forward funds and facilities projects that we've amended in compared to the proposed budget. It's not the proposed budget from last year compared to the proposed budget for this year. Because if you look at the two original budgets, our budget did go up for this year. However, as I said, this is the amended budget, and so it does show that it actually has gone down, $2.3 million. Instruction is our biggest gain as far as funding. We actually went down a little bit in our instructional support area, down in general administration, down in district operations, down in debt services, and then in other services as well. So all of our funding categories actually decreased, with the exception of instruction, which increased mainly because of the teacher salaries and those added positions of aides and dyslexia teacher and some of those.
Cheryl, please.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you leave it, Paige, oh, you're back.
Oh, debt service is wrong. You were going to ask that. Sorry. That is the wrong number. It did go down slightly.
33881?
It's down slightly, yes. It, see, the dollar amount went from 15,79222 to 15,759320, so that per pupil amount is incorrect.
District operations from 35 to 23.
That because the facilities money was in there. We had about $7 million, $6 million, I think, for the Guama and some, the finishing up of Indian Springs and finishing up of some work, it says Archivas, but there was several million dollars in there. We had E-rate projects last year that were not funded, are not funded in this coming year. So there was a lot, and then a lot of maintenance projects that we put through. This is really, district operations tends to be maintenance and facilities, security, technology, those areas.
I don't see how the numbers ended up being that close, but I, okay.
On a per pupil basis.
It's $185 per pupil.
Per pupil.
Well, I guess I'm just, I'm, proposed budget versus actual, in 2013, there were $2 million off, but it's just on that one item, district operations. It looks like we're $12 million in difference.
It does seem, it does seem wrong.
Something, something about the, I can't see enough difference in the other numbers there to make that up, but.
I will need to, yeah, I'll need to look at that because it does seem like that is, there's a typo in that, I believe.
I think it should be two, I think.
25 million?
Yeah, 25 to 23.
In the first column?
Yeah. You're right, Carrie.
You're right. That does, that does look like, no, I think the second column should be 33. I will add it up, and I will let you know before we adopt the budget, okay? When we, when that item comes up, I'll let you know what the difference is. Sorry. Okay. On our truth in taxation, oh, were there any other, any other questions about that? Okay. On our truth in taxation, again, we went over this on the 14th. Our total appraised value for the preceding year was 5.9 million. Current tax year is 6.2 million. Our new property was 28 million. Last year, 131 million for this, this coming year, or this taxable year. And then the total taxable value of property was 3.9 billion last year. I'm cutting off three zeros. And for the current year, it's 4.1 billion, with a total taxable value of new property is 27 million, and last year and current year was 69 million. As we talked about before, you noticed that last year, the new property appraised value and taxable value were very close, and this current year, the new property is substantially higher than the taxable value. I mean, the total appraised value is substantially higher than the taxable value, is because a lot of the new property this year was non-taxable property, particularly a lot of additions in Baylor that is not taxable. Our total amount of bonded indebtedness is $181 million, and that is just the outstanding bonded debt principal. This is the comparison that we do of our proposed rates with last year's rates. We adopted a $1.04, that is the maximum amount that we can do as a district without a tax ratification election for maintenance and operations. Our rate to maintain the same was $1.01, and this is basically the equivalent of an effective tax rate for the district. The proposed rate is, again, the $1.04, because that's all we can do without a ratification election. For interest and sinking, our rate last year was 31.48 cents. What we need to fund our debt for this coming year is slightly less at 31.324 cents. So our total tax rate went from $1.3548 to $1.35324. However, because of the increases in value, that actually generates additional funds for the district. So you see that local revenue going from 3,838 per student to 4,799 per student, and then the total proposed rate goes from 4,146 to 4,843. So that is about a $700 increase per student in our revenues, and that's what we use to cover the salary increases and the additional requests that we funded and the benefit increases and what have you through, and that's included in this budget. As far as the comparison of the proposed levy with last year's levy, on our average residents, our average residents' value did increase. It was 94,975 last year. For this year, it's 98,532, and the average taxable value last year was 77,505. This year is 81,312, with a change in the tax rate, even though it went down slightly. Of course, with that increased value, the taxes do go up from 1,050.4 to 1,135, which is an increase of $50.31 on that $98,000-valued home. On our rollback rate, because we published the $1.3532, and that is the amount we need, the $1.04 for M&amp;O is the max we can do, and then we, the 31.32 is what we had to set to generate enough revenue to pay our debt service. This becomes our rollback rate. And so if we set, ended up setting a tax rate above this amount, we would be subject to an automatic rollback election. That's the presentation.
Mr. Dupuy, it, the second column, this year's district operations should have been 32,881, and it is correct on the website. What we published to the public was correct.
It's my typing today that was bad.
Dupuy is 32 on that column. Correct.
32.
32, 881, 466, instead of 23, 881. So that was the, all right.
Can't blame it on anybody but myself. I wish I could.
We will forgive you. This is the part of the hearing where we will solicit input from the public on the presentation by the administration. Is there anybody from the public who would like to provide feedback or input to the board at this portion of the hearing? All right. Hearing none. I will close the public hearing, and we will reconvene the regular board meeting, and we are now down to item 10, which is the consent agenda. No one has asked me to pull anything from the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like pulled?
B.
B, as in void?
Yeah.
All right. Is there anything else that anyone would like pulled from the consent agenda? Then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item B.
Some news.
Thank you, Mr. likes. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Dupuy?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda is adopted unanimously. Item ten B, budget amendments. Mr. Cartwright, Mr. DePuy.
Let's see. We'll get to it here in a second.
Yes, sir.
Anything specific? There was a, it's a, this time of year, you have to explain these things to me again, but we're reallocating a large amount of money to look like miscellaneous expenditures. And it's kind of vague. Do we have anything more specific than, I mean, I see a lot of stuff.
Are you talking about on the?
Sixty-nine.
Amendment sixty-nine?
Amendment sixty-nine, yeah, sorry.
I took the opportunity to move money around from the, from various functions because by TEA law, we are not, we can't expand more than we have appropriated. And so instead of specifically going out to a given line that may be, that I felt was going to be under expended, I went and used Object Code sixty-four ninety-nine miscellaneous operating to just put it there instead of going out and putting it line by line where the specific funds needed to be done at a function level.
Okay. Do we normally do that this time of year?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's, okay, pretty sizable amount, I just, okay.
And we may not even be spending it, but.
No, I understand. It's, it still has to end up in the right place in the budget.
It just needs to be in the right function.
If you don't spend it on those specified amounts, yeah, okay, okay.
And because we didn't have the final payroll, we had some of those accrual issues, we were, you know, we just, if we get close and it looks like we're only going to underspend the budget by about five thousand dollars, we'll, and we have another function that we're going to overspend by a million, we'll, we'll shift money around just to be sure, because we'll end up with an audit finding if we don't. So, and most of this, it goes into, the miscellaneous that you see is our contingency fund, so it will not actually get spent from that account.
You promise?
You're kidding me.
They'll probably already spread another hit count.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, Cheryl. All right. Any other questions on the budget amendments? Thank you, Mr. DePuy. I will entertain a motion to adopt item ten B.
Some moves.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there a second? Ms. Pettis seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now move down to discussion and possible action, consider hiring of administrators. Dr. Kane.
Yes, sir. It is with great pleasure that I talk to you about someone that I'm recommending. I know you like it when we hire from within, and we can't always do that, but sometimes the next best thing is to hire someone who used to be here, but who perhaps left us for a while. Dr. Amy Matthews Perez is a product of Waco ISD. She's been in education for twenty-two years. Prior to moving to South Texas with her family, she has served Waco ISD as a teacher at Lake Air Middle School. She's had a position as the speech-language pathologist, special education specialist, administrator. She served as the director of special education in Gregory, Gregory Portland ISD immediately prior to showing interest in the position of principal at Hillcrest PDS. As she returns to Waco from South Texas, she brings multiple years of experience as a campus administrator and district-level administrator, and she looks forward to being part of the Waco ISD team once again. Her doctorate is in educational leadership from Texas A&amp;M at Corpus Christi. She has a master's of speech pathology and audiology. She has a bachelor's degree in education. She's certified in secondary English, secondary speech communications, generic special education, speech-language pathology and audiology, mid-management, educational diagnostician, and superintendent. She is a, is a member of many of the different associations. In her leisure time, she enjoys spending time with her family. She takes advantage of any opportunity to be outdoors, whether it's playing golf, hunting, cycling, or walking her Boston terrier, Roxy. And because this, Hillcrest is a PDS school, we involve Baylor very much in the selection process because it's very important that not only we think she's a good fit for Hillcrest, but that Baylor thinks that as well.
Dr. Kane, I know you're well aware that obviously we changed principals late in the summer, and we've had an interim there, who's been working.
Yes, sir.
With the staff, and they've kind of built the plan.
Yes.
And I think they've pretty well all coalesced around that plan, and Ms. Rubio has really been instrumental in doing that. What is Ms. Rubio's role moving forward for the rest of the semester if we, if we do this?
Actually, this worked out rather well because Dr. Perez is still working in Gregory Portland, and although she has talked to her superintendent, and he knows that she showed interest in this job, actually, she showed interest specifically in Hillcrest. I mean, she called about Hillcrest. It wasn't about any elementary school. Her, it was her interest in the uniqueness of that campus and that relationship with Baylor. But, so her superintendent knew that she was interested in this job. So she would need, now need to notify him if the board approves this. Their job would have to be posted. She knows we're not in a rush, that we have someone there, and she's pleased to know that because they do have to move here. She, her superintendent does not want her to leave until a suitable placement has been found, and, you know, special education vectors are, are very difficult to find. She has that luxury of knowing there's extra time. Ms. Rubio will be staying through December, the end of December, regardless of when Dr. Perez comes. We're looking at a very smooth, seamless transition. It's, we want Ms. Rubio to stay to actually help Dr. Perez because of what you're talking about. It has been such a smooth transition, and that's what Dr. Perez wants also. So I don't see this as a, I see it more like it was going to happen anyway. You know, ask Ms. Rubio if she would stay for the whole year, but she can only stay through December. So in December, we were going to have to bring in somebody anyway. So I think this is going to be actually easier than what that was going to be if we just brought in another substitute, or interim, excuse me.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions or comments? All right. I will entertain a motion on the administration's recommendation.
Some moves.
Thank you, Ms. T. Kell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And also, Mr. President, we're going to see if we can't find a time for Dr. Pettis to come up here, even if she's still working for Greg, because she's very anxious to meet the staff and get an idea and talk to them and find out what their expectations are and, and some things that they would like to see. So I think before we hire her, she's going to be working with that staff in some capacity.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. We will move on to item eleven B, gifts and grants. Dr. Kane.
Yes, sir. The district was awarded three-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars from the United States Department of Education for the second year of the Waco Counseling Project. This funding will continue to expand Waco ISD's capacity to provide counseling programs and services to approximately two-thousand-five-hundred students at some of the district's most economically disadvantaged elementary schools. Campuses served through this project are Brook Avenue, Crestview, Hines, South Waco, and West Avenue. Also, Indian Springs Middle School was awarded a three-year Title I Priority Schools grant from the Texas Education Agency totaling four-million-eight-hundred-and-nine-thousand-and-thirty-two dollars. These funds will allow the campus to hire additional staff to focus on college and career preparation, establish zero-hour classes, provide after-school programming, and increase parental involvement. The funds will provide teachers with professional development opportunities to obtain the most current information about best practices, instructional strategies, and integration of assessment results. J. H. Hines was awarded a three-year Texas Title I Priority Schools grant from the Texas Education Agency totaling three-million-six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-four dollars. It's been a really good month. The campus will extend learning time for students while offering additional professional development for teachers. Monthly professional development in the areas of math, reading, and data interpretation will be provided for all teachers. So I'm recommending that the board accept these gifts and grants to Waco ISD. It is an increase of eight-million-eight-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixteen dollars.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Very good.
And we, we have great plans. Both, both the principals, Mr. Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Hall, everyone is really excited about what we're going to be bringing to the campus, the additional help. We've had phone calls from people in the community who, there's a wide array of jobs that are going to be made available, and we just can't wait to get started.
I don't know who prepared these specific grant applications, but I know everybody up here is aware that with the existing inequities in the school funding formulas and with some of our students who have needs that we are charged with addressing, it is very nice to have a talented grants department that is continually finding alternative sources of funding to the sum of over eight-point-eight million dollars this month alone. And please extend our thanks to Charlotte Garcia and Dale Baron and the folks in that office because they continue to come through and do an amazing job.
Well, now that you've brought it up, I don't want to drop any names, but a certain large company that we, is looking to give grants called yesterday. We're in the finals for, five campuses applied. I have a feeling three. I kind of, you know, they start questioning about specifics of a campus, so we kind of got the feeling that there's going to be three campuses that we've made it into a nice area, and we've just, and again, the, the grant people call the superintendent, and of course, we're texting for the grant people to come up so they can talk about the different aspects of the grant. And I mean, our grant people, it was just like, they knew everything about the grant, and if there was any question in the grantor's mind about the preparation of the grant or the understanding of the infrastructure, they didn't have that after they hung up. So I'm hoping next month, I'm going to bring you.
That's one, and again, the, our students have great needs, and this district is so diverse from the super gifted to those who, with extreme learning disabilities and having these additional funds to address that great variation in needs is, is a huge, huge plus for the district. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Manning.
Dr. Kane, the one for Hines, that's three-year, do they take that three-point-six and divide it over the three-year period so they're only going to get one-point-two?
Yes, sir. And the same thing for Indian Spring. It is over three, it's kind of like the Guama grant with six million, but it's.
Is this a three-year grant also for Indian Springs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Dr. McDermott answered that because she worked night and day for two weeks on that one.
Okay.
She was part of the grant.
And, and, well, one of the interesting things about the Indian Springs is that, but they saying by the end of the second year is when they're going to have the electronic tablets coming in, they won't have them the first year?
Yeah, they will.
They will.
Oh, they will have them the first year?
Yes. They are, we're waiting because iPad's coming out with a new model, and so, what month?
They'll be announced next week, so we'll be available to pick up in October.
Right. So as soon as we, well, two things. As soon as TEA gives us the stamp to start spending the money and iPad has the new model, they'll be ordered. But Dr. Jenkins is having a rollout with those so that they'll start in their classrooms, and every student will have one in their classroom, and then they'll begin this process of practicing when the iPads will actually go home with the kids because they're going to build responsibility with the students in a sense of understanding that this is their tool and they're going to use it correctly, and, but they will be taking them home by the end of this year.
Okay, and, and we're going to have tracking on them?
Oh, absolutely. We're, we're working out all of those details, yeah.
And Mr. Manning, I actually, I was at Indian Spring Monday, and we were doing walkthroughs of the classes, and one of the students asked, they had heard about the grant, and he asked his teacher, he was worried, he said, what if my battery go, will I still be responsible for my homework if my battery goes out? And I, I mean, they, and they wanted to know, when can they take them home? And they were talking about their campus before they could check it out at the library and how good they could, they took care of it. It was, they are, there's such excitement.
Is that the new, the dog ate my homework?
Yeah. The battery ran out.
I'm sure we'll learn all of the new excuses about the iPad homework, but yes, yes.
And that's going to be for all grades?
In, at Indian Spring, yes. Sixth, seventh, eighth grade, one to one.
Other questions or comments?
Very good. Looking forward to that.
I will entertain a motion to recommend acceptance of these grants.
I move we accept the gifts and grants as presented.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I can't imagine anybody's going to vote no. All those opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next is item C, consider adoption of the two thousand fourteen-fifteen proposed budget.
Yes, sir. When Ms. Davis said the superintendent will, will deliver our cause to be delivered, my part is very, very small in that. I talked to Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis put, I don't know how many hours of work and into that, and she is dogged about it. It's everything, that little error that you pointed out, she will, she does not tolerate any errors in her own work. She's just an excellent CFO, and I'm very proud of this budget. And trust me, you can count on every cent being squeezed out of the taxpayer's daughter and well-spent. She acts like, she guards it as if it's her own money.
I got a question.
Mr. Manning.
Isn't this the, what, the first time in a couple of years that we had to raise? In the last couple of years, didn't we stay level, I mean, stay the same?
For the budget?
I mean, for, for the property tax rate.
Oh, that would be you.
You're going to get me going again.
Well, as we talk about in the next item on the tax rate, we're not actually raising the tax rate. We have to say we're raising the tax rate, but we're not raising the rate.
That's what we always say, the last couple of years, we have not.
We told you we were.
We stand about the same.
Right. It stays about the same, but we actually have to say that we're raising it five-point-seven percent when we went down. But we'll talk about that in a minute.
All right. Any questions on the budget? Ms. Davis, thank you. David, thank you for your efforts in putting this deal together. I know it's a huge task. All right. And we've looked at this all summer. I will entertain a motion to adopt the two thousand fourteen-fifteen proposed budget.
And the other budgets that are also included in there?
Which would be the general fund, child nutrition fund, debt service fund.
As part of the official budget.
Are we adopting a budget or a tax rate first? This is the budget.
Budget first.
Sorry, okay.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the budgets as presented, the general fund, I guess we can do them all together, child nutrition fund and debt service fund.
And then the other budgets.
And the other budgets that are included in that motion for the challenge academy of the school for the deaf and the advanced manufacturing academy.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Murphy seconded. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of approving all the budgets as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now we will consider resolution adopting the tax rate for the two thousand fourteen tax year. Ms. Davis? Do you want to explain this screwy law?
Yeah, I try. Good luck.
As I mentioned earlier, because the way truth in taxation works, because the property values went up about five-point-seven percent, actually, that's sort of what the increase in the tax rate looks like. Because our effective rate is calculated, and the effective rate basically is a rate that would generate the same amount of revenue, but with higher values. So your effective rate is then lower because if we generated the same amount of, of revenue as we did last year on the higher values, then the rate is lower. So we are still adopting the dollar four for maintenance and operations. We're leaving it the same, but a dollar twenty-seven in total would have funded our debt service and given us the same revenue in maintenance and operations. Now, we did salary increases, we had other increases in the budget, so we did increase our maintenance and operations budget. our maintenance and operations budget, the general fund. And so we have to say in our statement there in red, and this is the way the motion needs to be, that we effectively increased the tax rate five point seven percent, even though it's lower.
So where it says that we're adopting a tax rate of one dollar thirty-five, three two four cents, that rate is actually a fraction of a penny less than last year's rate.
Correct.
And then the appraisal district did its valuation of properties, and those values have gone up.
Correct.
We don't have any say in that. That's not our call.
That is correct.
And the rate we're adopting, it's a fraction of a penny less. We have to use this language you have printed in red on the agenda.
Yes.
All right. Just wanted to clarify that. Any questions, comments regarding the tax rate?
I apologize for jumping the gun.
Oh, it's all right. You can, we can complain twice. All right. With the clarification, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Sykes.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one point three five, three two four, which is effectively a five point seven percent increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pettis got the second. Any other questions or comments? So somebody whose property values didn't go up, their taxes are actually going to be incrementally less if they had the same property value as a year ago. Right?
That is right.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
You're clear, David. And people over the age of sixty...
All right. All right.
It wouldn't go up anyway.
All, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. We will move on to item twelve on the announcements. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. We're only three days in, but the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year is off to a great start. As of today, our enrollment count is fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four students, and we anticipate that number to continue growing through Labor Day. Campus leadership at all levels has done a fantastic job of getting kids to class so that teachers can begin teaching. We invite you to visit our schools to see the great things that are happening. Tomorrow night at seven thirty PM, the annual Derrick Johnson Kickoff Classic gets underway at Waco ISD Stadium when the Lexington Eagles take on the Teague Lions. Friday night's game features the University Trojans and Belton Tigers, and the classic wraps up Saturday night when the Lions of Waco High play host to the Harker Heights Knights. Derrick Johnson, graduate of Waco High School and now an all-pro linebacker for the Kansas City Chiefs, will make an appearance at this Friday's game. So join us this weekend at the Waco ISD Stadium, because football season is here.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Kane.
And finally...
Oh, you got more than that. Another page.
The distribution of weekend food backpacks by Pack of Hope will begin next week. With an increase in donations, Waco ISD schools will receive almost double the amount of backpacks as it received last year. Counselors, principals, and other administrators continue to identify children who are in need of nutritious food to help sustain them over the weekend. Waco ISD wants everyone to know that contributions to Pack of Hope are truly worthwhile. Sir, we do have students that the only food they have over a weekend is what we can stuff in a backpack. So we appreciate any support we can get to Pack of Hope.
Very good. Are there any other announcements? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Pettis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. All those in favor adjourn.